Okay, we'll go ahead and start the meeting.
Bob, put your mic.
Can you hear me better now? Roll call, please.
Vice President Bob.
Here.
Director Kay, are you Shafet?
Here.
Director Michael Shafet.
Here.
Director Artic.
Yes.
You have the frame in the cockpit.
We'll go ahead and run the meeting, and if Jim shows up, Hilton can take over. Public comments. Do we have any requests for public comments? Are anyone in the audience wanting to do public comments? If not, we'll go ahead to the December Code Enforcement Report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ed Roberts will be giving this report.
Good morning, Vice President Newton and members of the Sanitary District Board. Ed Roberts, your district code enforcement officer, I'll be providing the December 2019 Code Enforcement Officer Report. For the month of December 2019, conducted a series of four proactive scavenging investigations. In the packet, you'll find maps of the location with a brief summary of each and every contact that took place. No items of note during December. Just one on Hickory, which is kind of unusual for me. Most of the time, I concentrate in those alleyways. And I had one over on Joanne Street, which was an injured individual that had some mental issues, but it was an uneventful contact. Any questions regarding the scavenging?
Pepper Tree, was it any new occurrence, is it a new occurring person that you contacted?
Yes, sir. Yeah, the folks on Pepper Tree Lane, there's a couple residents that maintain, for lack of a term, kind of like a temporary lodging for folks in their garage, right at the curve. There's one person that uses the garage as a de facto clubhouse. Folks come in and out of the place, kind of use that as a base of operations. That, in essence, is a gravitant to the area for a lot of the transient folks. But no real, like, regular offenders that I've seen.
I always ask the same question, especially for Pepper Tree.
Yes, sir. And moving forward, for the month of December, total of 83 storage of carts in public view were addressed by myself. Just for the benefit of the Board of Directors, I'm sensitive to the fact that the holiday season, December, we, I try to handle everything as softly and ensure voluntary compliance to the best of my ability and take a softer approach with folks during the holiday season just for, you know, just perception.
Do you think that was possible because CRNR didn't pick up and do all of it?
I noticed a lot of that, sir, on some of the residential streets. The other thing, too, is you've just got an influx of wrapping paper and just overabundance of material, cardboard boxes, all the stuff that comes with the Christmas season. I just noticed our trash volume probably went through the roof during that month. And I think folks were probably filling their trash carts out and probably trying to do a second run, refilling them out again and seeing if they could get curbside pickup. But nothing unusual. All right. And just for the benefit of the Board of Directors, at the tail end of my report, I address graffiti. There's limited instances of graffiti popping up. Most of them are self-inflicted folks, just taking a spray paint can, writing their address numerals on the actual can itself. I don't think it rises to the level where it needs to be addressed. If there are any egregious instances, I'll telephone it into CRNR and request a cart replacement as soon as we can, just so we don't have that proliferation of graffiti in the community. And at the back end of my report, you'll see at a glance map of the locales during that month, and it seems like a fairly even distribution. You've got two on the north end and two on the south end. That concludes my report.
Just a real quick question. Some of the multifamily units that have individual carts, you know, the one to fours, some of them have enclosures, like the one behind my office, those landlords all are required. I think that's a city requirement, that they have to be enclosed. Do you ever, or do we keep an eye on the graffiti that might be on those things?
I see it, sir. A long time ago, just for your benefit, I was actually involved in that when I worked code enforcement on the City of Costa Mesa side. There was a push to encourage the multifamily property corridor to enclose.
Yeah, yeah.
And on the other side of the coin, my, you know, I'm aware that graffiti, anywhere that there's a large open wall or canvas, per se, it's going to be a target for graffiti in the area. Pepper Tree Lane doesn't have, in my opinion, what I perceive to be a significant graffiti problem. I don't see a real issue in that community, that portion of the community. I would say more on the Shalimar end of town, you know, south end of town, that's where graffiti, Joanne, all that stuff, that's where I do see graffiti affixed, the trash dumpsters, enclosures. But that just goes with the makeup of the area, you know, there's.
City does a pretty good job of cleaning, I mean, our graffiti task force, or whatever they call it, they do an admirable job of getting out there quick and cleaning it up.
I would say so, sir. I mean, I'm actually kind of impressed with the way the City of Costa Mesa and how they conduct their graffiti abatement. Gaetano used to be out there, I know Greg Gaetano since retired.
Yeah.
But there are many, many staff members who are out there early morning, pressure washing or covering up the graffiti, so.
So, just, just, I mean.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Officer Roberts? Thank you, sir. Our next item is the hotspot cleaning program.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, in 2011, we, the district had 97 hotspot locations. And a hotspot is a sewer line segment that requires high-frequency cleaning, twice, two times, three times, sometimes four times a year, due to root infestation, fats, oil, grease, structural defects. If we don't clean them more than once, then there's a risk of having a sewer spill. So, in 2011, there was an internal committee created that consisted of myself, our wastewater maintenance superintendent, our cleaning crew, district engineer, and EEC Environmental, who manages our fats, oil, grease program. We would meet every three months, and we would strategize how to reduce these hotspots. The thinking, the theory was, is if we can reduce the amount of hours spent on the hotspots, we can shift those hours to our annual cleaning. And as you know, we have a strategic goal to reduce our hotspots to less than 30. So, I'm pleased to inform you that we are now down to 18 hotspots. We believe by the end of next fiscal year, we can get that down to 14, because we have two hotspots that are located, that are ductile iron, and we're going to do a ductile iron replacement project. And also, there's a couple of projects that, after a couple of cleaning cycles, we're not pulling a lot of grease or grit, so we could probably put that back on the annual cleaning as well. So, we believe at the end of the 2020-21 fiscal year, we will have 14 locations, and these will be our permanent locations, they'll be considered permanent. And the reason why we're permanent, because these 14 locations have severe structural defects, that it's just more cost-effective to clean them than to repair them. So, we will currently have 14, and by having those 14 hotspots, it saves us 72 hours and 45 minutes of labor a year, a cleaning, and those hours are now shifted to the annual cleaning. As a result of having the 14 permanent locations, I made decisions to disband this internal committee, and we only meet if we need to, if necessary. So, basically, the objective was achieved, and I'm pleased to report that this committee's disbanding, and we've achieved our objective. So, happy to answer any questions.
The structural defects, are they siphons?
No, they're severe bellies or.
Sags.
Sags, thank you, sags, yes.
And the two ductile iron replacement projects, are they in the works, or do they still need engineering?
I don't know, first of all, I'll know more later this afternoon, but I understand there were other designs, yeah.
Whether it's going to be replaced.
PVC, plastic.
Okay.
Yeah, most likely be slip line, yes.
They're ductile iron because they're in a problem where, you know, wheel loads might have affected it.
Sure.
Is the plastic pipe strong enough to?
It's a good question, I'll have to confer that with engineers, yeah.
I think historically, we've just reamed them out, and maybe, I think one of the alternatives is ream them out and line them, but.
Yeah, I believe that they're rusted, and so that's why we have to either remove and replace, or we line them.
Figure out a way to, yeah, we either line them or figure out a way to replace them.
Yes, correct.
Not sure plastic is strong enough.
Do you know those two locations that they're at?
No, I don't.
They mainly go across, like, Harbor Boulevard. And they're not deep enough to withstand the structural loads from the roads.
I was just curious if we're going to have to close the lane or something.
Well, that, you got the choice we had to make, but historically, we haven't, and.
Yeah, I kind of hit the ballgame here, we just, we're, you know, we have some time to get that done, so by next fiscal year, we'll get it repaired.
Steve, how do we, if there are hotspots, how do we clean them?
We will just do the routine cleaning with the wart hog.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's.
If it needs step cleaning, we'll do that, too.
Okay. Any other questions by board members? Okay, thank you very much.
Very good.
It's an excellent job. The December 2019 organics tonnage report.
Just staffs available to answer any questions you may have.
What about we have the numbers on tree, Christmas trees? Will that be on next month's report?
Yes, February report, yes.
Last part, are Christmas trees still being collected? I don't remember the dates, that's all.
They're still on the street.
Still on the street, some, a few places.
So, ours from CRNR, the, we were collecting from 26th to the 10th, but if somebody calls in customer service, then I think we will still collect it.
Okay.
But I'm talking about like active collection, was going on between 26th and January 10th.
Okay.
But yeah, and I've encountered some customers, and I've just told them to call in and request customer service.
Now that we have a fake tree, I don't bother with it.
Well, I had seen, I'd seen the normal container pickup thing, I think they were putting them on that and putting them in the, in that, in that collection truck thing, so is that?
Cyclable truck.
That's standard practice now? You used to go around and pick them up with the front loaders.
So, you saw them pick it up in, like, a side loader? Oh, I see, okay. I guess operations made a change. I thought that they were doing it from the front loader.
They are doing it on the front loader, we saw them. I think this, I think what you're talking about, some operator went rogue and picked up a tree.
I believe that's what happened.
Is there any issue with that?
I imagine if it can fit, like, size-wise, then the sidearm should be able to pick it up and dump it in there, and maybe that's what he was thinking.
Also had the front loader come by our area.
I had one of my neighbors say, "Do you see how they collect Christmas trees?" They were amazed that the guy was on the front and, you know, hey, they got it done, so.
Other questions? The 2019 solid waste diversion report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Board, were staffs available to answer any questions you may have?
This is a very good chart. What I was talking to CRNR bars before the meeting was, I'd like to see a schematic of the green waste organics and finds the things that we asterisked down at the bottom there. So, I'd like to know that the organic cart goes to CRNR, you know, and what they, they do something with it, and, you know, some of it goes to the landfill, and some of it goes to the digester, and also the green, some of the green waste is separated out of the mixed waste carts, and some of that goes one place and some of it goes another. And that's going to change, but, you know, I'd like to see a schematic of that, of how we deal with those kinds of things in sometime in the future. Any other questions on those reports? And, you know, I look back in 2006 and 15 and 14, and it's amazing how these waste characterization charts have changed. I'm sure, Jim, you're well aware of that. And, you know, it's because the materials, you know, there's less newspaper created and there's less whatever, but it's also what happens to end up getting dumped on the ground and sorted out. Okay, the next item is, if there's no more questions, is the schedule, we need to work on scheduling, when we'll be developing the strategic plan?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, so, it's that time of year, we have reached the fifth year, we're in our fifth year of our 2015-2020 strategic plan. So, staff is recommending we begin developing our 2025 strategic plan, and to do that, to start off, we're suggesting to board schedule a workshop-type meeting, so we can review again our vision, our mission statement, core values, what are our goals, maybe we have different goals, you know, what are we trying to achieve in the next five years? So, if you can look on your calendar and pick a date, preferably in April or May, and then before that, I would like, I'll have some meetings with staff to engage with staff on what they believe our goals should be, and I'll share that with the board. Also, I will invite the Assistant Advisory Committee members to attend your board meeting as well, so they can be involved in this process. So, if you can give us some dates that work best for you, that'll be helpful when we get the ball rolling.
What month?
April or May?
I know that Easter break, or the spring break of the school, it should be April 6th of that week, so it probably should be that week.
Okay.
So, I was only going to say that. And for me, it's best not to, my opinion, what would you think, do you think that number of meetings should be?
Well, let's start off with one, and then we'll see what, how far we get, and if we need to schedule another, we'll do that.
I think I'm available in the other morning.
Is there any way we can get our, the strategic plan from before? So that we have some idea, like, how we planned, our goals, what our goals were?
Sure, well, as you might recall, every quarter, I give you an update on your strategic plan. So, every three months, and your staff and your board, in effect, you'll have your next one on January 27th. So, every three months, I give you an update, here's the status of the goals, have they been achieved?
Okay.
Yes, we've been doing that for almost 10 years now.
On the website, too.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's on, I think it's pretty prominent on the website.
Probably should probably ask Mike and Arlene, what dates fit them better, because they're usually the ones that are out of town.
Or April?
April or May, but.
April's a better month for me. May, we've got some plans, and I know the Solid Waste Conference in New Orleans is the first week in May. April is just better.
The Angels aren't playing April.
They play in the evening, so that's not an issue, Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, the first.
That's right, the baseball season is.
Normally, they play in the evening.
First week, I'm in Sacramento, but, and you said the second week is not good.
Well, I could probably be available, but I just know that it's probably okay the second week, too.
Well, I think, I, we need to obviously check with whoever else is, you know, the CAC and their schedule and all that other stuff, but you're tending, we're going to tend to do these in the morning, I would assume. So, I don't know what your participation from the CAC is going to be, depending on their work.
I think this is a board project, and CAC can sit in if they can make it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, I would suggest.
What about the week of the 13th, somewhere in there?
That's Easter, let's see.
No, the 6th is.
6th is the.
The 6th is Easter week for schools.
School's out, 6 through.
Yeah.
Day is Easter.
It's, well, it's the 12th.
12th. So, that's, that probably won't be good, huh?
Yeah, I can adapt.
We have a study session on the 14th, tax day's on the 15th. How about Thursday, the 16th?
Fine.
Nine, tentatively 9:30.
9:30?
Wednesday, the 22nd. How about Wednesday, the 22nd?
Why do I have it marked? Thursday.
Why don't you come up with two or three dates?
The 22nd, I've got a 10 o'clock, but the 16th is wide open.
Do you have a problem with the 16th?
Also, we might ask the manager when he's going to be around, being he's internationally unknown.
Nope.
Said the 16th is available.
I'm hearing. Huh?
What day of the week is that?
That's Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
It's hard for me to, as I sit here right now without my work calendar in front of this.
Well, yo, Thursday's sometimes a conflict.
Sometimes Thursday's an issue, but I can overlook that. I would rather go back to my office and have a couple of options to get back to you on, if we can do that.
Thursday's the 16th.
What's the second option for you, Mike?
20, Wednesday's the best day of the week for me, overall.
Why do I have San Diego, the 22nd?
I have a doctor's appointment that morning, but it's possible to change that.
That's not Wednesday.
What she had, that's the STLF conference, the week of the 20, the 19th, I believe, right? Do you remember? Yeah.
Oh, okay, you're right, because here, SD, yeah, okay.
Or 29th, do April 29th? That's a Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm open that day.
That, like I said, typically in my work schedule, Wednesdays are an open day.
April 29th at 9:30?
Working at 9:00.
9 o'clock, sure.
Earlier, better for me.
Same here. We've pretty much decided then not to have an outside consultant, you're going to do it.
Well, I'll facilitate it, yes.
I think it saves the district money.
Yeah, it's good.
To have someone say that, to have someone come in and tell us exactly what Scott would tell us, anyway.
Done, done.
Especially Scott, he and Scott meet. Okay, so, so, we want to choose one of those dates?
April 29th, April 29th at 9 o'clock.
10 o'clock?
9, 9, 9 o'clock.
What date did you say?
April 29th.
Good. How long do you visualize?
First, maybe.
Half a day?
Two hours, couple hours.
Okay, the next item is mitigating roaches in the sewer system.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. This item was requested by the board to be discussed today. I've been briefing the board about a recent issue on California Street. We have a resident, or actually a property owner, who's renting a home on California Street, and this property owner is telling us that his, this house is infested with roaches, and that the tenant is no longer paying rent or suing them because it's so We've had several conversations with this gentleman, and we did CCTV, the main line and his lateral, we did find light to medium root, light to medium roaches. We typically spray this area, this California street neighborhood, that whole neighborhood area, every two years, we use a company called Goldenbill. They have a patent pesticide that no other company can use, and it's approved by the state of California, that proves to be effective with roaches. So, we were about six months behind, but we did end up spraying that neighborhood in the middle of December. The whole neighborhood was sprayed, so that's good for two years. I did include in your staff report some suggestions on how to prevent roaches from entering your homes, and quite simply, it's very simple, you just got to block any kind of crevices, cracks, holes in your home, that's where they come up on it. I remember I had roaches in my house, and pest control had said, "Well, that's coming out of your drain in the laundry room, you just got to cover that up." Once I did, they went away. You know, it was pretty simple, so I don't know why this person is trying to blame us for it, but he was supposed to be here today, he said he was, that's why I invited District Council Alan Burns here, if you have any questions with liabilities we may have, but that is our approach. We currently spend about $20,000 on roach infestation, which sprays about a quarter of the district. So, if you want to do half the district every year, so you'll have the whole district every two years, it's going to more than double. If you want to do that, then just direct staff to come back, and we'll come to the board and ask for an appropriation, but that's going to be over $45,000 a year. So, it's more than double if you want to do half of the district, so that's something to consider. But myself, Steve Connel, and District Council Alan Burns, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Have we ever had any other complaints about this same topic?
We get, yes, we do get complaints every once in a while, I don't know how many, but we do get them every once in a while, and getting to my staff report, if we recently sprayed and we opened the manhole and there was more than, we see more than 50 roaches, then Goldenbill will come and clean and respray it at no cost. Sometimes we see less than 50 roaches, then we got to use our own pesticide, which is not quite as effective as Insecta, but that's what we do, but we do, occasionally do get calls.
You know, I live on California Street, obviously. This, this house, well, first of all, I have a pump station on my property. We do not have a roach problem in our house. I can't tell you the last time I saw a cockroach on my property, whether from the pump station or my lateral, maybe I'm doing a good job of abating them. This house, that this person is complaining about, the manhole is two houses to the north of this house. So, they're not directly, you know, the roaches are apparently coming out of or going through and coming up just his lateral, because I've talked to several neighbors and people in our neighborhood, nobody has talked about a roach problem. So, I personally don't think this is our issue, I think this is a maintenance issue at the house itself. This house is kind of unique in our neighborhood, because the whole front yard, there's no grass, it's all pavers. And they're, and I, I've driven, I drive by there every day, I don't remember seeing, you've been to the property, right, Steve? There's no cleanout out in front, is there?
No.
To me, that's the easiest way for them to solve that problem, is to get a cleanout and regularly maintain it. I don't think this roach issue is our problem, based on my limited knowledge, but also my experience in that neighborhood. I just don't see, I don't see it.
Yeah, I'm not in that neighborhood, but.
I know.
I'm in the College Park area. They're going around with this listing, and this is a private company, to turn around and try to get you to, you know, go with it. I am with a private company right now, I've always been.
Pest control.
Well, it's not pest control, it's termite, you know, it's for, yeah, termites, and it's a yearly thing. I just sign for the year, and they qualify me so that, you know, they come around and look and do their little holes that they have to do and so forth. And we don't have any trouble in the College Park area, because everybody takes care of their own problems. They either spray it or take care of it some way, and I feel like Director Schaefer, that, you know, I don't see us, you know, having to really jump on this, because I would rather see more than one person, you know, complaining.
I'm in total agreement. If there was an opening that roaches could crawl through, they, that house would have a sewer smell. I don't think they reported that, you know, I would not make any changes in our present policy for roach control, based on one, you know, one potential. I don't think we have any, 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 any part of this problem.
You know, not being a roach expert, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, Steve, when you CC'd. Well, Steve, when you CC'd the TV, the lateral, what did you see?
We did televised our lateral, and there was some, I would say, light roaches throughout the whole lateral. But, you know, they hide in the house laterals, too, so they have access to the houses, but it was very minimal, so.
The way they have access to the houses is if, if they let one of the peat traps dry up or whatever. And then they would see them in their bathtub or in their sink or where.
I just think the nature, I'm sorry, but I think the nature of this house and the yard covered with pavers, I think that, I know if I have something in my yard, a, a rock or a solid surface, and you go to pick it up, there's generally bugs underneath those things. They go there because the moisture gets trapped. I personally think that this owner, by paving that whole, the whole front yard, is encouraging these bugs to stay in because it's a more moist environment than if it was just open grass. Am I wrong in that?
Possibility.
I mean, I just don't understand that. I don't think this is our problem.
And even if they're in, in the yard, why would they go in the house? I mean.
Unless they have bait.
Unless they have the door.
One question for Alan, do you see any liability on our behalf?
No, Bob, I don't see any liability. Like, as everyone said, it's not really our issue. Sewer, roaches do live in sewers. It's kind of a, you know, they like warm, dark places, and that's a natural habitat for them. I'm kinda surprised Golden Bell would give a two-year warranty. I'm wondering what the warranty would be, because I'd be surprised if a roach didn't come back within two years.
Well, do we, Steve, do we do?
50, yes, even so, I mean.
We do roach control for staff?
When we do get calls from HQ, I'll send my guys out, and we use a, it's called Demon WP by Insecta, I believe, no. Demon WP, but it's a less potent spray. It's just go out, we just go out there just to spray for the contact.
Well, my question was, why do we do roach control at all? Is it, is it for staff who have to enter the manholes, or?
No, they don't have to enter the manholes. When Golden Bell comes out, they just pop the manhole and put in a, it's like a spray applicator or coats the walls. And if we didn't do it, the infestations would start up again. There's only certain parts of the city where the heavy roaches, like areas with the apartments, you know, high dwelling areas, yeah.
And it's probably grease-related.
Yes, or flatlines, you know, they love them.
Commercial area, restaurant areas are gonna have roaches, because they.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess, kind of to follow up with Art's question to Alan, we're doing our due diligence with, as a district policy, we're doing our due diligence. Aren't we to mitigate the roaches? I think we are.
I think Art had a good question. I'm not sure what the, why we do spray at all. If it's effective, that's great, but I'm kinda surprised we do spray. And whether it's for staff or, I mean, whether that actually helps or not. I guess somebody's done a study about it, and this company has suggested that it does do something for you, or else they wouldn't be in business, but.
One more question. Scott, when did we start the supporting process? Has it been the last 10 years or is it before you?
Yes, it's before I, it's before I've been here, yes, it's been, it's been in place for a while.
Count the roaches to make sure there's 50.
It has any, has any, has any, has staff contacted vector control?
No, we have not.
I think that'd be interesting to see. My suspicion is they're probably, studies and things done, and vector control would be on top.
We have the council for vector control.
I know, I know.
Some insight.
Well, I thought, I thought maybe Alan had heard.
I not only, I not only know about vector control, but I have personal experience with asking those same questions, so. I can assure you, they'll be very helpful in giving you information, they won't treat it for you. But I've gone through this personally myself at the office, and it was, the issue was, it was a seal on the toilet. I mean, it was that simple.
Oh, yeah.
And it was just totally night and day, it fixed it. And, yeah, but somebody said, mentioned that there'd be a sewer smell once in a while, and there was, once in a while. We were thinking, why do we have that? And it was just that seal and little silicon, problem solved. We spent tons of money trying to fix it with chemicals and sprays and everything, nothing worked. I mean, they, they were dead.
Yeah.
Find them dead, but.
They'd reoccur.
Showing up on the carpet.
Dead carcasses are sometimes worse than the live ones.
Pardon? It was the stuff like you'd caulk a shower with, just silicone around the toilet base and fixed everything.
I was wondering why they do that.
Putting the smell.
Yeah, then you would notice the smell if there's a sewer connection that's open in the house. I wouldn't suggest that to the guy. Okay, do you have direction on that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Oral communications and director's comments?
I, I have one, if I, if I might, Mr. Vice President. Talked to Scott a little bit yesterday afternoon, and I've talked to you about this as well. I would like an agenda item for our next board meeting to name a facility in memory of Rob Hamers.
Oh, that's nice.
Whether it be a pump station, I, you had talked yesterday about maybe even naming the yard after Rob. I don't have a pro, I, I think, as important as the guy was to this district for so long, that, you know, a lot of agencies now, and maybe some agencies actually have policies on naming things, but whether we have a policy or not, I, I'd really like to see us put Rob's name on something to memorialize his contributions.
I think we should check to see if we have a.
Yeah, yeah, Bob, I'm sorry.
I know at Orange County Sand District, we did not have a policy, but the board did name one particular facility.
I know the City Customs Mesa has a policy on it, so.
Most, a lot of cities will have it. I, based on Director Schaefer's direction, I took the initiative and started already writing the staff report and getting some estimates. So what would it cost to replace or revise the couple of signs? We have two signs at the yard, so I'm getting those, those costs. Also, I did relay it to his daughters that were considering doing that, they were very excited. In fact, they're gonna be back in Southern California in May, and that might be a good opportunity to do like a proclamation and maybe a little ceremony with that, with their families here. The thing is, I just got off an email with them before this meeting, they're gonna be here on May 20th and May 21st. Our board meeting's May 24th, so something to consider when I bring this item to you for your consideration on January 27th. Do you wanna reschedule your board meeting when they're here, you know?
I don't, I don't think we need to reschedule the board meeting. I think we just have a ceremony regardless. I mean, let's don't, for the sake of the public, let's don't change the board meeting. Let's just do a separate presentation or something at the site, wherever we're gonna do it.
Okay.
Unless you wanna do like a reception or something, and.
That's.
We can do that anyway. So let the board meet at the same time. Yeah. I, again, changing board meetings sometimes gets sensitive with people and.
Sure, sure, but I'll, so I'll have that staff report for you on the, on your January 27th meeting.
I would suggest not renaming a pump station, because they used to have numbers, then they got names. And, and if you go out and look at the panels, you know, then all the plans have to be changed, you know. There's a lot of background from those particular facilities' names, and they're not uniform now, although they all have, you know, they all, they all have a modern name, and then they had an old name. And if we give them a new name, you know, it won't, it'll be harder to keep track of. Something like a building, though.
Yeah, when we meet on the 27th, we can determine that location. That way the public can know that we're talking. Well, no, I mean, I would like it decided, the sooner the better. The 21st.
No, you decide on the 27th, and then, then you give us a green light, we'll, we'll start making the signs.
At our board. Sorry, I had the wrong, the board meeting's on the 20th, I'm sorry. On the board meeting, we can discuss it, because we, the public may have some concerns, too. Yeah, absolutely. I just think it's an appropriate way to honor, honor Rob.
I was pretty proud of that yard building because of the green LED, L-E-E-E-T.
The whole thing, yeah.
And so maybe not, well, yeah, it's either the building or the facility or, or something. Anyway, staff can come up with some recommendations.
I think we all have some ideas already, you know, but we need to discuss the board.
Well, did you say we don't have a policy?
I don't know, I'll have to check it, I'll, I'll look, I'll put it in the staff report.
Any other director's comments or communications? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.